We already opened our council meeting upstairs before the second session. We've come out of that, so we will start down here with the pledge. There you go, guys.
The pledge is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation, under God, in the first book with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda is public comment. And if anyone has a public comment for something other than what's on the agenda, we welcome you to come up to the desk now. Just state your name, do we have it on record? Anyone online?
There's no one online right now.
Okay, alright. Uh, that was our chief of law.
Hello? Hey, everybody. We have a couple of things on the agenda that are supposed to go to us. The first one, Corporal Sean Boujwa, mind stepping in, please? I'd like to take a minute to recognize Corporal Boujwa, who retired a few months ago from the police department. Just to give you a kind of a world view here, just to give you an idea how long he's been involved in this. Sean Boujwa came, started his public safety career working in the Siskiyou Valley Rescue in 1993, so thirty years ago. In ninety-four, he started in the Swan Police Department. Ninety-seven, he was hired by Milton Police Department as a full-time officer. Well, the next eight years, Sean worked for Milton PD until he was hired by us, St. Albans Police Department, oh-six, as a domestic violence investigator. In oh-seven, he was promoted to corporal within our department, where he spent the rest of his career. In addition to doing domestic violence, Sean's been an integral part of a lot of things we did, including major crimes, homicides, death investigations, suspicious deaths, and robberies. I'd like to recognize Sean for his thirty years of commitment. It's quite a, it's quite a big deal for anybody of those people, particularly from our department. We haven't had a lot of people that stay, a lot of people leave, a lot of people came on later in life, and Sean did a great job. Sean was always, we tried to get him to sit around and do some part-time work with us even after. He's now on the federal government side of things. We set up a plaque that we had given him when he left our department. Detective Corporal Sean Boujwa on recognition, fifteen years of service at the St. Albans Police Department. Again, you get thirty years full. Sean hanging that proudly again, greatly missed. Your seniority was beneficial in our office. You were a big help when I first came here. Your detective work and domestic violence world, you were awesome and awesome for that. We miss you, we did talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you say my name?
Yeah. Absolutely.
I just, first of all, thank you all. I want to start off by thanking the city and their leadership, including the four mayors that I worked under, including Mayor Manahan and Matt here. Of course, the elected officials, all of you, and then others as well. And of course, our city manager, Mr. Cloud, for many years of healthy relationships between City Hall and the police department. I also want to especially thank the police department and our staff of past and present officers. They gave me ample opportunity to enhance my skills and my specialties. And in return, I was able to better serve our community, which was extremely important to me. Folks, we have a really special police agency under our chief administration. This is a police department that now we should be very, very proud of. And I think that our community is also proud of. I just want to close by saying that I wish the city and the police department, the best of luck with their current and future endeavors. Thank you.
John, come on up. Alright, next we have a motion that we just made in our department to corporal. This is John Howell. Give a little spiel on where he is and how he's gotten here. Our department runs on a rank, runs on a rank system. We have four sergeants and four corporals for ranks. And John will make our third corporal, even one made him. The corporal position in our department is important because it wraps us every day, supervising a sergeant if he's not on duty. John's going to be a great person for this position. I'll give you a little bit of idea why. Corporal John Howell began his career in the St. Albans Police Department on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. From the onset, he has the unique ability to build instant relationships and rapport with people in a way that strongly reinforces the department's community policing initiatives. Corporal Howell can talk to anyone in any situation with respect, professionalism, empathy, and knowledge about the situation case in hand. Additionally, Corporal Howell has an EMT background, which only enhances his ability to converse with people in a crisis. Corporal Howell, you've proven yourself to be dedicated, motivated, professional, and empathetic officer in our department and in the city. You have shown that you adhere to the three core values of St. Albans PD, which are courage, honor, integrity, and believe that you can instill these in others from a supervisor position. Corporal Howell, I'm pleased to announce you've been promoted to rank to corporal at the St. Albans Police Department. Ben, John's been here. He's now a drug recognition expert for us and for the state of Vermont, which, do you know how many there are right now?
Last, I'm not sure. It's less than fifty.
Yeah, so the whole state. They keep putting out emails asking for more officers to step up and take this. That's an incredibly rigorous position to be in. He was accepted early in his career, earlier than the parameters are for this position. And it kind of speaks highly of his dedication and professionalism, that he was chosen for that, and he excels at that as well. So, I expect big things to happen. I've said this since the day I got here. We need to prepare for the future. We have a lot of people that are deep in their career age-wise, experience-wise. So, we need people like this to come on and step up into the ranks. So, it's a great thing. I appreciate it. Thanks. Thank you all for your time for listening to those. Those are both important, they're both in this area.
Thank you very much. I think we have a great police department. I've been in my position in the city for fifteen years. The entire fifteen years, we've had a great police force. So, I appreciate all of the dedication. I know there's a lot of time not at football games, or baseball games, or dances, or whatever. Spend a lot of time out here serving the public, so I appreciate it very much. So, next on the list, we have a public comment on public safety. So, Dom, do you just want to get right? Do you want to, the chief, do you have anything to say, or you just?
I think the chief has a couple of comments. Well, I'll just slide over to Hawkins' chair. Chief, why don't you take my chair here? And he can frame the issue a little bit for us, and then folks who want to speak.
You got it. Thank you. So, obviously, we on the council are not oblivious to the things that are happening. They're happening in our neighborhoods. There's a reason why we each come from a different part of the city. The crime that we've seen is impacting all of us in some way or another, whether we're getting calls, or we're seeing about it on social media, or however we're hearing about it. But I appreciate you, chief, being able to come in today and speak a little bit. So, Dom, you said you were going to frame it up, and then?
Will's going to frame it up.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. So, when I heard that we're having a discussion tonight about this, it does come as a total surprise, right? So, we look at stats, we run stats every month. I don't know how many people in here look at the stats, but we run and we put in it. I'm not saying show it in media or whatever, but we post our stats every month on our website, which is a standalone website now, but it used to be on their St. Albans city website. If you look at those stats, and you look at our, just our number three or four top arrests for the month, just look at those, will almost kind of tell all about they are, right? So, if you go back, and I did today, unfortunately, I left at the office, but I can tell you what they were. If you look at from the last six months, so June to today, our top four arrests are arrest on warrants, arrest for violations of conditions of release, retail theft on lawful trespass. Those are four top arrests for the last six months. And that's every single one, doesn't change. So, those tell you that, the arrest on warrants means that people are out. On arrest warrants means they failed to either go to court the first time, or failed to go to court for other court cases, or court meetings that came up regarding arrests that already happened. Violation of conditions of release means that somebody went to court, was arraigned, was given the conditions of release, which means the judge at the time said, "These are your conditions of release, so you don't go to jail. You need to be here, do this, have a curfew, not drink, not drive, whatever the case may be." There's multiple conditions they give. Violation of conditions of release means we ran into that person for whatever reason, whether it's proactive, most likely reactive. And we ran their name in the system, and the system came back and said, "Hey, that person is violating condition one", meaning they had a curfew when they were in house, so that's violation. So, that's our big arrest for the month. Retail theft is pretty self-explanatory. We're getting retail theft cases on the average. My member off the top of my head right now is like four and a half to five a month. Unlawful trespass. Unlawful trespass is big, and most of those are coming from retail establishments. Some from houses, and most are from retail establishments. Those are our big arrests. To some of them. And all of these, warrants you can, you know, take out of however you want. Most of these are drug-related, drug-initiated problems.
Now, do, I mean, we've heard a lot about complaints lately about people breaking into cars. So, is that any of these categories, or is that a separate category?
So, that would be a separate category. Retail theft does not cover that. That would be larceny. There were some larceny arrests. What we find with those typically is that's per trip of one or two people, and they can do a lot of damage even one night. We had sixteen, I think, in one night. And we now have, I don't want to get into too many details here yet, because we have enough to make arrests on them. And that will likely solve all of them in one person. So, that's all it took for one night. That's typically how those car breaks go. Last summer, we had a string room that was one female that was thirty or forty. That's typically out. It's one or two groups of individuals that cause a lot of problems and car breaks.
But each, each time a person breaks into a car, that's one incident, right?
Can be one charge as well.
One charge, okay. So, you break into sixteen cars in one night, that's sixteen?
If you can, if you can get a charge on each of them, if they steal change, you have a million evidence, and don't get a confession, it's going to be hard to prove that. If you even recover the change, it came out of that car. But if they steal items, and you recover those items, it's easier to identify the vehicle, and it's easier to get charged. But when they steal just change or dollars or money per se, nothing that's identifiable, it's difficult to tie them to it unless you get something on camera, or they confess to it. But the items is where we get a lot of recovery and a lot of evidence to prove a charge.
Sorry to chime in. Car breaks, I only say car breaks just because that's kind of the term that we fall onto. In this last string, there hasn't been a single car broken into. I'm not saying that that's anyone's fault, but the doors are also unmarked with valuables in that. So, it's an opportunity for that.
That still gets a lot of.
Absolutely. We're still seeing, yeah, I say that, car breaks is right, it is a bad term, none of them are actually currently.
Chief, what your summary seems to indicate by omission is that the armed robbery that we all saw on TV, so, the main robbery, people got all upset about it. And I've noticed that a person of interest has already been arrested, so I think that's good, excellent police work. But violent crimes are very blown on the totem pole.
Very blown. We had two armed robberies this summer. Not, I didn't say armed, but that, both of those were solved right off. Then we had this string, the rash, which isn't normal, right? I mean, I can remember the backwards bandit in Chippewa County a couple of years ago, that did a bunch of them. But then this, this was probably the next closest I can think of that were that close together. Like, we were having them every thirty-six hours. Without getting too far into that, because that's still waiting for some work, but it's going to be a good case in the system. The image where we lodged that Friday morning, a couple weeks ago, in our last, or whenever it was, everything is stopped right now, so we're still working on that.
Yeah, that was, that was great.
Yeah, everything takes time, unfortunately. We gave a lot of time to that with a lot of extra detail work and a lot of techniques we were using to try to stop that. But it took time, and that's unfortunate, that's the kind of way it goes. Nobody was, you know, a lot of times people come forward, nobody was coming forward, is what it is, so it took some time. Wasn't a lot of evidence there to use, and some body, some video that everyone saw, which hardly identify a ring on video when they're covered up sometimes.
Do stores have like buttons to push, like?
Do you want to talk about that, or do you want me to?
There's some, there's some stores that do, there's some stores that don't. Generally speaking, the ones.
Those stones did.
So, moving on with that, unfortunately, when you have one of those systems, in most cases, they're rigged to a third party. And the third party, when they get around to it, calls the store and says, "Hey, it's a panic alarm, everything okay?" And then by the time they do or don't get feedback, they call the police department. They can take.
So, it doesn't ring directly to dispatch?
No, generally not.
Because I'm like, well, why aren't they there? Because she rang the little tone.
It takes.
Okay.
No.
That makes sense.
Too much time.
But either you, anyway, any of these armed robberies or robberies, or is that, the delay is our biggest hurdle. By the time it calls, I can tell you, one of the armed robberies, there was, I'm going to estimate here, nine was working that night in Overton. And we were there within, I think our first cruiser was in the air in like six and a half, seven seconds from the call. And most of us were on site in fourteen, fifteen seconds. And we still, the guy was long up. Because the delay in that call, from the time we got it, was two minutes long up. So, we learned a lot on that one with that, the delays. And that one does not panic learn, it's just a phone call. But again, if you call nine-one-one, you don't know for sure if it's going to come to our office or go to another office. It is, we watch the video, and I'm not complaining about anybody's reactions to this. If you watch, everybody waits till the person leaves, and I understand that, because you want to make sure you're safe, and then, you know, and then that all takes time. So, but a panic learn sometimes isn't the best way, because of that delay. And does not, no matter what, no panic learn is going to ring to our office, it's going to go to a third party. It's just like if you have a house alarm, not how you can do it, or anything, but a lot of times your house alarm goes off, the first thing happens is that alarm company calls you back to see if it's real before they send the police, because you might get charged for it. So, that delay is the same point of panic learn. The only ones that are a little quicker is a bank, but they still don't ring to the city, or to the third party first. And I don't know what the answer is, I don't know. The answer is they're the cashier calls as fast as they can, but there's still going to be a natural delay, it has to be. There's just, they want to make it quick. There's a phone, and then there's dispatch. And dispatch was really good, we had to talk about this, talk about this after the first one. Like, as soon as the call comes in, dispatch to it, ask to it, don't get any more information, then head to the store, and then get more information after. And that's what we, but what they don't think people didn't realize is some of these, that we don't respond directly to the store. We ask the cashiers to lock the door as long as they're not hurt, and they're alone, and wait. We're going to the last known location that the person was headed, so we can try to have, to try to round up where they are, get a perimeter on where they are. There's no good for us to collect to the store if they're not there anymore. It's going to be taken on. So, lessons we're learning, not lessons, we modified as we were, as we were going to do some things, especially after the one where we were literally in the parking lot within seconds, and they were gone.
So, what's your recommendations for people, for the public, for their vehicles? Sounds like lock, click your doors, make sure, don't let yourself be the victim, right?
Yeah, we try to post on social media, on firework, and leave them, you know, nine, P, thirteen, you lock your doors. If you don't, at least take stuff out of your, out of your vehicle that's of value. And as far as the robbery information, we've done for the business district, the folks that are headed for that, robbery prevention techniques, and some other local businesses are done. So, those are a couple of things we're trying to do.
Awesome, thank you.
The car breaks will take, I mean, I'm not going to say it, they're not going to pick up again, because they will. That's just the way it is. People are on the street all night walking. And if there's a human activity, unfortunately, they're going to take it out of the truck.
Okay, thank you. I think we, I think we have a member of the public here that would like to speak about some of the public safety. I'm only guessing. I'm only guessing, I'm looking at all the other stuff, just not seeing you fit in on you that.
On the night you gave awards to the police. Nice agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, Ken, thank you, members of the council. I'm Gordon Winters, I own a A store across the street. Last, I sat in front of the councils probably to talk about the first Tiff project here in St. Albans that was to build our building. So, I have certainly admiration for St. Albans and a big heart for St. Albans. And I'm here tonight that I would just, I'm not certainly blaming the council and not blaming the police force. I'm just bringing to your attention, and hopefully that we could come up with some solutions, because maybe frankly, we're missing something at our store level and the retail level. But I've been in this business in retail for crazy enough, thirty years. And we started our store here in St. Albans in Palm Wells Mall over twenty years ago. And retail theft here in the city of St. Albans is the worst that I have seen it in my career. We have six stores now, and St. Albans is the worst theft in any of our stores. So, there's some reason for that, and the people are brazen that are coming in. It's just, it's different now. And that's what I want to tell the council, it's different. And before, when we had people that would steal, they would walk in our store, we could follow them around. They would know we're following them around, and they would leave. Now, they walk around, and you can follow them from aisle to aisle. And when they're ready to go, and their ride is in, or they're ready to walk out, they grab what they want, and they leave. Some, I've shared a video with Dom and Marty, I think, and a few, Mayor Smith, about a recent, people came in, grabbed some Yeti coolers, stormed out the door, knocked into a elderly lady, walking out, you know, there was an altercation between the thief and, two thieves, and our employee and a, and a customer. And it's, that's never, never happened. And here now, to tell you how comfortable they are to steal here, we had a recent theft of two gallons of paint. Now, it seems, I know, two gallons of paint isn't something that we need, the, that we would expect the police would make a high priority. I realize that, I'm not asking for that. I'm just here to say, that's how people, how comfortable they are. They came in, they picked their gallon of paint, they picked their product, they picked their sheen, they picked their color. We mixed the paint for them. They distracted us to go somewhere else. The customer grabbed the paint and walked out the door. This took twenty minutes. They were just like if you came in to pick two gallons of paint for your room. And they felt comfortable enough to do that. Now, we should have watched that person better, maybe, but it's, it's, maybe we thought they were going for a paintbrush, something. There, there's just a, a, a different feeling. I appreciate hearing that we're on top of it, that, that we're talking about the stats. But I'm just telling you, at the store retail level, it's different here in the city of St. Albans. And I don't want, we've done a tremendous amount of work here. This city is beautiful. We've spent a lot of money, a lot of time, and a lot of energy to make it this way. And I don't want to see it go the opposite way. And I just wanted, I was happy to see it on the agenda. I appreciate you letting me speak, and thank you very much for that.
Have you talked to other store owners of Walgreens Pharmacy and other?
I don't talk, yeah, I don't, I don't talk to Walgreens, I don't talk, I haven't, I honestly, I, I don't know if it's our store. You know, I hear stories about other retail theft. I mean, I think certainly our store is bigger, our store has a lot of things that people want. And frankly, we, we don't prob, we take part in it, you know, we don't. Five years ago, we probably had a more proactive staff than we do now. You know, we, we certainly take part in what's going on. I'm not, I'm not asking for the police to be stationed in our parking lot the times we're open. You know, we, we have, we as retailers have to do better, we as this retailer have to do better patrolling our own store. But it is hard when, like, as soon as the sun goes down, we have less staff, we have younger staff. And frankly, they don't want to follow a thief around. And really, I don't blame them. If it was one of our sons or daughters, we probably wouldn't want that either. But they're coming here somewhere, and I know other towns try to just push the thieves out. And I just hope we don't turn a blind eye that, and want that, and let them come here. And I think drugs is, we find needles in our parking lot, we find cars loitering all day long, we see stuff going on that probably shouldn't, and I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure that's where it begins.
When did it get worse?
COVID.
Absolutely.
Are people who are robbing you wearing the masks?
The, some do. You know, now, I walk into.
I feel like that's like a permanent, like, making get away with having their face covered, and it looks normal-ish.
I walk into the, the stores now, and we're, we're thinking of hiring a security guard. You know, that's, that's our thing, we're going to hire a security guard, stick an armed, oh, I don't know if he'd be armed, but a uniformed officer in downtown St. Albans in front of our store. And I think that's a bad look for us, that's a bad look for St. Albans. And it's, it's just not what we want. You know, we, we built our business off, we would, it's, it's a welcoming place that we trust people to come into and do business. And the last thing we want is to see what's, what's, what's happening. And it's just COVID, I think, and I think the thing that I can put my finger on, and maybe Moe can say it, they're just, they're entitled to steal, like, there's no, there's no sense of urgency for them to leave the store. There's no sense of, if you follow them, most of the time, they don't, don't, you, you have to escort them out the door. And if I'm not there, if the manager's not there, that's probably not happening.
I completely agree with COVID, that, everything changed with COVID. I can't say definitively why, other than maybe it brought in a different clientele. And I don't know if that's the only reason. We had, we offer some resources here that some other communities didn't, because it, but it did change. During COVID, I think things slowed down across the board for us. But when COVID started to break, now that more or less society's out together, it's, this is coming out, this is coming out in all avenues. Your store, I think you're the top five, and they're all, you know, most of them are right here. They're the bigger stores, like yours, that offer more product. And that is, that is an issue for sure. Retail theft is a big deal.
What's the interaction with the end of the hotel voucher program? Did the hotel voucher program?
I would say that the end of the voucher program, this is me talking, from my, my thoughts on this, is that we had a, we had a rather large hotel voucher program, St. Albans, city and town. But the town voucher program is just outside our limit, right? City limit. That brought in a large group of people that may or may not have been homeless. And I'm not suggesting that homeless people are going behind all this stuff. I'm just, there are people that took, that went to the voucher program that may have been couch surfing, may have been homeless, may have been living with people that were now living in the voucher program because they were technically didn't have their own house. The voucher program started. The voucher program ended July this year, right? July, then August, I believe, June, July, November?
It was ended June.
And when that happened, those, the people are living in the voucher program, a lot of them stay in St. Albans. And that pushed a lot of people to limit with paying for things, like, a lot of people absorbed that. And you're now having two or three people living in apartments. We're not seeing a lot of homeless populations. A lot of people are suggesting our large, large homeless population is causing, oh, that's not the issue. We aren't seeing a large homeless population now. There are a lot of people doubling, tripling up in apartments, and we're seeing a lot of people sharing apartments. But we walked through where we know the homeless encampments are more or less, there were, there isn't anybody there right now, nobody. They're not staying there, they're staying in other places. And those, the people on the fringe economically are living together, and living in large, you know, large groups inside apartments, is what they're doing. And maybe they're the ones behind all the retail thefts, but the voucher program brought a lot of people into this area. That, then, may not have a lot of economic resources for it.
Does that timing coincide with yours?
Yeah. More than, yeah, more than likely. Yeah, I, I, I think, I just asked the council to think of something that we can do to help this problem before it's too late. You know, I, I see that we have a store in downtown Burlington. And if anyone follows downtown Burlington, you know, but now, now they're trying to get ahead of it. Now, they're trying to come up with hiring security guards out on the, out on the street to stop it. Now, they're trying to come up with, with, if you call the city of Burlington, the police department, I tell everyone to do this. Their phone messages, we're under less of a protocol, we can't, please, please go online and file your complaint. You know, because they have so less, the police, that can come to a retail theft. You know, I realize. You know, I realize that when, when your department gets twenty calls an hour a day, whatever it is, and it's, it's our Yeti cooler doesn't really rise to the top of your list. I understand that, except it's starting to rise to the top of mine. And the more, and they feel comfortable and they know they will never get caught. They know they, they, they have a very good chance when they walk in our store that we won't catch them. Then they have a very little chance that the police are gonna apprehend them. If they get to court, it's their very high probability they're getting thrown out. So when that thief comes into a store, he's got a pretty good idea. He's got, he's got pretty good odds that nothing's gonna happen to him. He's gonna end up with our drill and he's gonna sell it by the time anything happens.
What can like a customer do? Like I've been in Hannaford's and I've seen it. And I go and tell the people at the office, but a friend works there. He said people leave with carts full of groceries. They just walk out with carts full of groceries.
I mean, I would never sit here and tell anybody what to do in that situation because you don't know who you're dealing with.
I didn't say anything. I just went and told.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 like, I know you look at, I just hate, you don't know who you're dealing with. You don't know what you're confronting. That's kind of like Mr. Rogers said, you know, ten years ago, five years ago, twenty years ago, it's different from your approach to somebody that may be stealing. It's different now. You don't know who you're dealing with. That risk is always high. So I don't, I, I, I would not suggest, I would not ask a customer step into that. You just don't know. You don't know.
Yeah, a lot of retail establishments, they, you can't confront the person. They just let them walk out.
Yeah, I would, I would love to say, you know, do the right thing and do something, but you just, you know, you're asking for liability.
It's like the lady at Stone's that had enough.
You don't, you don't, I, yeah, you do have, absolutely are, but you don't know who you're dealing with.
You know, we knocked the guy, our employee and a customer, they got one Yeti cooler back. You know, we lost two others, but that was one more than we were gonna get back if they got out the door. And that's, that's, the reality of it is, they leave, we don't get our product back. And that's the only, the only thing we really want at that point is our product back and them to know that we know. You know, if they, like I've always said, this, this again is, I, I'm, I don't know the law. And I realize times are of the essence. But if someone stopped them in the parking lot, someone stopped them at their house, I know you're at Ace, give me that cooler back. That does way more than it does getting five months down the road in front of the judge and district attorney. And then tell them, well, you don't have proper video of this toy or so, you know, I don't think you really stole it and case dismissed. So as soon as they walk out the door, we've got, you know, a finite thirty minutes before we could at least have our product back. And prove to that thief, we're on him. And prove to that thief that when he goes on thief.com, Facebook, that they spread the word that don't go to Ace, don't go to St. Albans, don't go to something. So that's, that, how to get there, I don't know. I'm just saying, that's what, that's what stops them. And word spreads among them just like it spreads among the honest people.
I don't think I can do anything about the judicial system, but is it, is this some, something like their downtown board could take up?
So if I might be, okay, I know that the, the downtown business committee or health committee, the health board here.
The Berthold's group?
Yes, thank you. I meet with them on a semi-regular basis, just to kind of touch base, check in and, and do put forth some different trainings. Tips and tricks, not the answer to everything. I don't know if that's been working, but something's working differently, at least on the main strip. I'd be more than happy to do that with your staff, Mr. Rogers, at any time.
Sure.
And the other thing too, just to kind of mention, the, the way that the Vermont law is written for retail theft, they have to leave the store at the last point of sale. So that's, that's their part. They've actually gotta leave the store. They can fill their pockets in your store, but until they leave the last point of sale, they have, they have a Vermont law.
That's what I'm running a store in another area.
Well, they leave our store.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah, and we have another store called, another area that they're, think there's, and they probably aren't going to do that.
What about a knock and talk, you know, I mean, what, I think what I'm hearing Gordon say is, you know, we don't necessarily need to get a home run conviction every time. Sometimes just some contact from the police would maybe have a inhibiting effect on the next action.
I think, I, I, I wrote up, I bring, you ran the things out. Most of the ones that we've had, we have a four, three or four, three to four of the eleven we have, we're still pending, we have identified. The ones we identified have all been trespass. That's all they've been, correct?
That's what they've been requesting.
Right, so we, we're looking at video working from your staff with, you know, they're just asking for trespass notice, not arrests. And so they've identified, which is trespass. But they could also be ones that are getting arrested for trespass later. I don't know.
Can you keep them out of your store if you have a?
You can, against the law, they come back in. You can't physically, other than a piece of paper.
But so if we ask for a trespass, we should ask them to be arrested if you?
No, no, if they finally trespass. Well, yes, I'm saying if you know, if, I would rather if they leave with your product, because there are quite a few cases we reviewed. I say quite a few. Product was either returned by the person or the return to your employees and they just want a trespass notice. So that, I would rather see them still arrested.
Yeah, we do.
And a trespass notice.
Both, both. But we don't get a lot of product returned.
No, 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 I'm not saying that's in majority cases, no. But every time that happens, at least the courts may see that this is a trend happening to your store for one. And for two, that same person, a trespass, unless you're people who are egon, I is highly remember how people have trespasses.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's.
Because the, there's hundreds of trespasses.
And they don't, if they, if they're trespass, I don't know that they really, if that flies.
What kind of, excuse me, people are these? Could you categorize, they're young, they're old, they're men, they're women?
I couldn't say men or women. They usually appear like they may be someone that would be stealing. You know, typically you can, typically you can tell the person is committing theft.
That's not as many, I don't think it's one or the other.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, but, but you could, you could, it, it, it's typically someone that you might pick out as a meeting, something to.
Sounds, sounds like we can have the police, police department at least sit down with some of the employees and be a little more proactive in what to do.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're happy to do that and we're happy to take any part of it. But I, I don't certainly wanna leave here thinking that that is the answer. I'm here to tell you, St. Albans is in a different place than it was five years ago. You know, we can say, did we trespass them? Did we arrest them? Did we ask? You know, frankly, I don't, I don't, if you knocked on the door and we said, we're asking for a trespass, you wouldn't say, your officer wouldn't say, were you just an ace? I'm here to trespass you. Did you steal anything if we didn't request that? And that's the first I've ever heard of that. Like, so we have to request what we want done to the person.
If the product has been returned, that's usually where, if we're looking at, the officer asks, what are you gonna do with this? Do you want them charged for?
Well, let's go to ninety percent, ninety-five percent of what happens. The person comes in, they steal, we call you. We usually have, a lot of times we have their name because we put it on Facebook. We're, they never bring the product back. Do we have to at that point say, we want them arrested? We would need you to ask for the product. We have to be specific with an officer what we'd want done. Like, cause I think we're just calling and saying, this guy just stole this Yeti cooler.
No, if we have, if we have an arrest, arrest offense and we have a name, we know we're gonna arrest them for the theft.
Okay, so we don't, it's only if our stuff is returned.
That's where I see, that, if I'm seeing that more is that the product has been returned right then and there. By either the clerk or person at work who has recovered it, or they brought it back because we confronted them on the street. Which has happened a couple of times.
Yeah.
Cause some places, they're living, they're walking out, just walking out, means.
I think too, because I've reviewed a couple of body carries and maybe it's a good, I'm not saying it's good, better, or different. But in some situations, your staff are just saying, we just want a trespass. So, yeah, I don't know if that's a good or bad thing or where that lies.
I think it'd be worth, you know, to Gordon or anybody else to ask, have Jason come out and meet with your staff? And just talk about the nuts and bolts of it, you know, like how do we do this better? And, and, you know, there's, you know, I question whether having an officer put, you know, walk up and down Main Street would be a deterrent. I question whether we have the resources for it, but maybe that's part of the solution. Is there, is there a pattern you can discern? Like is it, you talk about it being oftentimes after dark.
Yeah, and dark certainly is a time, but we, we have many, you know, when you say you have five, whatever that stat was. We have many, many attempts a day. It's not, and we don't call the police for, if we find a, a open bag of a plumbing fitting on the ground. You know, we don't, but we have several a day, not five a month.
I mean, there are, Sierra Trading Post in Williston has clearly someone there that's like in plain clothes, following people in the store. Cause I watch them, do a little shopping. TJ Maxx has all their purses under lock and key now in plastic cases. I mean, I hope that we can figure this out as a community before our businesses have to like lock everything and have everything strapped down and I, I hope that we can figure it out.
Yeah, it's an awful, it's an awful, for a customer, it's an awful feeling for a customer. If you come in and something's locked down, or you come in and we start following you, you come in, it, it just, it, it snowballs to the point like you're paranoid when you're seeing someone walk in your tool aisle.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's a feeling that we, we never had. But certainly will tell us, staff, don't just ask for a trespass order if they take our product.
Right, ask for a rest. Well, when I tell you five, that's five arrests more. That's not five retail thefts more.
Okay, well, I think we can, we have a couple of action items. I don't think we're trying to sweep it under the rug or.
No, we get, we sat in the parking lot during the, we always have a lot. And I don't know if they were called in or were they, I don't think they were, but just trying to be a deterrent for that and everything. Cause you're, you're central locations for getting around if nothing else. And you are one of the bigger stores right here.
And, and I don't, I, I don't think that someone is at all sweeping under the rug when we call. I think there's a lot of thing that we can't expect. Every time we call, it can be the thing that we deal with. But it certainly, that's the only thing I deal with. And for us to stay in business, we, we can't have five or six retail theft attempts a day.
And we change your business here.
And, yeah, no, I, 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 like again, when I started, I said, I'm not here to, I'm, I'm honestly here just to tell you what I think and to see if there's something we can do differently to make it better. Because I, I want these criminals out of here as much as anyone and let someone else deal with it. Just don't send people to a town that we have another store.
It just seems like we could do something if we have a name and we have them taking, it seems like we could do something.
It's a tough one.
Hard part is the idea. Well, we tried to give you a name. We tried to put a, we can get a name pretty quickly on Facebook. Like we post on Facebook, we post it. Typically, we get a name pretty quickly.
Yeah, people are good about that.
Because people are sick of it.
No, they, they, and.
Cause we pay for it. I mean, you have to increase your price to cover it. I mean, you can't expect Gordon just.
Nothing's free, it's worse.
The professionals coming in and stealing your products and stuff.
You know, it, well, that's another, the professionals, I'm sure we don't even catch. They're, they're probably some of them.
My, my thought on this is they're not professionals. They're people that need money for something.
Yeah.
Well, there's most likely now something that we wouldn't encourage.
Yeah.
What is a Facebook post? Which Facebook posting is it?
A lot of them will follow it.
Um, we just put it like on our, depending on what store, we put it on our store site, we put it on the manager's site. And it's usually, does anyone know this? Got a picture of him? This guy stole a, a drill from us today and next thing.
On the St. Albans site, that's like, that's a trap.
Yeah, that's how we do sometimes on that. Typically, all the names will start creeping out pretty quickly because they're usually frequent flyers.
Gordon, have you ever contacted Vermont Retail on, on this problem too? They may have some ideas or avenues that you can look into.
You know, e- every retail association that I go to, we talk about retail theft base. I remember we talked about retail theft. It's, it's not certainly just here in St. Albans. You know, it's, it's bad in every store. It's bad in every store we own. It's the worst in St. Albans. So.
Through the Vermont Downtown Network, it's our understanding there are a few communities or downtowns that have prepared a platform for the legislature this year. And the, the spike in retail theft is one of the issues. So I think they're gonna be talking about it at the State House as well this session.
And that's great that they talk about it, but what we need is to get them, like the law could be whatever it is. By the time you get them in front of
Somebody.
Someone, it's long gone, long done. Your product's gone. You're gonna get the mo, even if you do get a guilty plea, they're gonna, you're gonna fill out a restitution form that you'll never get. Maybe you'll get five dollars, maybe you'll get ten dollars, but the product's gone and they know, then they're out, then they come back the next time. That's what I leave you with. That's what we have to figure out.
Yeah, what about if you had a security, security guard, you mentioned that. You know, would, do they have a right to, they have to do the same thing? He gets out of the building, arrest this person?
I don't, I don't think you can arrest anyone. I, I think, you know, and then who do you hire?
It's a deterrent more than anything.
We've, we've had, I think I didn't imagine this. There have been groups of people like retired military, people who wanted to do something to help the community. Am I imagining that?
I haven't had it here. We have, I say I, I have it here.
At the, at the joint police board meeting, there was a gentleman there that talked about, there was a gentleman there that talked about that. Um, in some communities, people who have some experience in that area.
Was it last May or was it?
Oh, no, I don't think it was last May. I think it was a couple of meetings ago. But I'm just wondering if that, like, people like would volunteer, like could volunteer to be a presence in their uniforms and their fatigues in some of the stores.
I don't, I don't think military wise, if they're gonna go for a retired person being in their military gear. I know Rutland has some sort of community watch type program, which is
But maybe not in the state.
Essentially, no, it's an extension of their eyes and ears of the community. And hopefully a quicker reporting type system.
Okay.
They're not taking action necessarily, they're, they're that extra present, extra presence essentially.
Thank you, Gordon.
Bumping up against your agenda, I know.
No, you're good. You get as much time as you need. Appreciate you coming in and, you know, sharing, sharing this with you. I think it's gonna be a joint approach to this. We can't do it without you and so.
No, I appreciate you putting on an agenda and I just, like I said, I just want everyone to, I, I, that, that's all we need. You know, to get the public talking about it, to get you talking about it, get the cops talking about it. And I think we'll get there hopefully sooner than later. But I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Can I make you talk about these cases? Lieutenant, I just texted someone. These cases belong to, we send these regular store of justice to bypass the courts to make these go faster. There's something we can discuss with the SA. If we have retail thefts, we send regular store of justice. You might get a quicker response, but I don't know what the response will be.
I'll tell you a quick story about the store of justice, the one we had in Burlington and this day we caught him, they had our tool, they wrote us a letter, said, thank you very mu, I'm so sorry. I, I love your store. I love supporting local stores. I'm so sorry that I stole from you. If there's anything else I could do, don't hesitate to let me know. I left his phone number. So I called and said, there's one more thing you can do. Bring my product back. Never heard from.
Restaurant justice, a quicker response, but not sure where the store owner.
Called the store to test it, said, well, what do you mean? The case is closed because he wrote you, he wrote you a letter, so.
It's what I do with my third graders.
Right? Check that out. But, and seriously, anything would certainly help. Thank you.
Dom, FY twenty-five budget, I believe that's next on the agenda.
Yeah, it's, um.
Thank you, Gordon. They're more than willing to stay and hear about the budget.
I could say, you guys had a lot more important things to talk about than my stolen gallon of paint, dollars for adding the twenty-five budget.
I, eighty, ninety dollars a gallon of paint. That's a lot for a gallon of paint.
So this is just snapshot of the calendar process. So, um, we're probably at about seventy-five, eighty percent of the way through it. Department heads have met with finance director and Sarah and I put the fitting touches on it in the next week or so. Should be done by the end of the year and then we'll meet with the finance committee the first week of January. Let's get, let's get this going. And then we anticipated being first draft, ready to go for the council at the regular meetings first Monday in January. So, um, we can talk about additional steps after that point. We'll see, we'll see how we're looking in terms of effective attach rates, services delivery. That's another.
Are you, I know some years we do a special budget session to present to the public. Are you thinking that or are you thinking we'll do it at one of our council meetings?
I feel like we just do it like, you know, so I think we'll, we'll present it in January and, you know, see what the council thinks. Okay, and depending on what, how that discussion goes, sometimes that, um, that influences the direction we go from there. Right, and then, um, we need to sign the warning by the end of the month in January. So, um, and then in the run-up to the vote in March, um, we'll probably have a hearing and some time to discuss it at the February meeting and then also the information session left before the march.
Thank you. Any questions for Dom? Any questions for the public? Thank you, sir. Chip, you're half the agenda this month. I got you teed up on my computer and we're ready to go.
Thank you very much, um, first thing, uh, because the, uh, we're in the, our candidate process for a few different boards. We have a couple of candidates for the belonging equity inclusion committee, but we're not going to, we're not ready to offer any new short appointments tonight. And they meet before the council meets in January. So in order to give them some runway with, and with a nearly full slate of appointed members, not having issues of having a forum, um, just asking that the council extend the three expiring terms through January. This gives us a little bit more time, cause I think we'll have the names of the new, new candidates, um, for you to consider for appointment after January meeting. So that would be the terms of Maurice and Miles, Eliana Castro and Clark Sheldon, just pushing them out to the end of January twenty twenty-four.
So you want a motion right now?
Uh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve those term extensions for the BEI.
So January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Trudy, seconded by Bob. Any discussion? Questions, comments? Thank you. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There you go. Five zero.
Thank you. And then on the DRV, we have two members whose two terms are expiring, Emily Byron and Dick Thayer. And they have both said, uh, they're interested in being reappointed. Uh, we don't have any other candidates at this time, so was hoping the council would consider reappointing Emily and Dick to the DRV for another three years to end, um, the end of December twenty twenty-six.
And because we're reappointed and we don't usually do interviews, so we only usually do it the first time. So do we have a motion to approve Emily and Dick for another three years, their term expiring twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six?
I'll make that motion to extend Emily and Dick Thayer's term until, um, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Marie seconded, or Marie made a motion, Bob seconded. Any other further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right. Next.
There's a, uh, you might remember earlier this year when the city purchased the Bellevue building, the Walden Theater building. And if, I think the others were the buildings that has Norwich and As the Cliff Lines. Uh, when, when those property transfers first came across, staff marked them automatically as tax exempt because the city owned them. Well, it turns out because they rented out their non-city business, um, they should be taxable. We came through the city council and the city council passed a errors and emissions certificate to switch those properties as taxable in the current grant list. Well, we had a further thought on one of those buildings and that is that, um, the Bellevue building has one, uh, one office space that is rented for Pathstone. The rest of the building is being kept vacant for the purposes of future redevelopment. So it is actually serving a municipal purpose by being vacant right now, uh, because most of that building is going to be, um, transformed as part of the proposed, of the apartment's development. So we had the assessing staff go through and figure how much of the building that would just be the Pathstone office would be taxable and the rest would be tax exempt. You know, that saves the city some money in having to make up, uh, for the, uh, for the taxes. So we presented an errors and emissions form and the last one for this grant list, just to adjust, um, the, that, the, the majority of the Bellevue building would be non-taxable. So we brought that tonight.
Thank you. Any questions for Chip? Okay, do you have a motion to accept errors and emissions certificate for the Bellevue building?
So moved.
Trudy made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Bob seconded. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All set, thank you, Chip.
Good catch.
Next, I believe we've got two, um, revolving, state revolving fund loan agreements. One of them is for Kingman Streets. It actually bumps up the amount of money that we receive for Kingman. You know, the project was done pretty, it was really done last year. Uh, but this, this change allows us to, um, help, helps us out with the final cash flow of the project by getting some more state loan and grant money. There's some subsidy that comes with it. And the other one is, um, ninety thousand dollars to do engineering associated with the planned storm water treatment at seventy-four welding. I believe that's the one. We have another one coming for the CSO project on Seven Street, but I believe this one is the seventy-four lower welding planning project. So just two, um, state revolving fund loan agreements for the council to consider and sign if you approve them.
Okay, any questions for Chip? Do you want to use one motion or separate motions?
It's up to you, it's up to your pleasure.
So let's do them separately. So do we have a motion to approve the state revolving fund, uh, loan, is it amendment? Agreement for Kingman Street?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, but Trudy, is, is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? And do we have a, um, do we have a motion to, uh, consider the clean water state revolving fund, loan fund for seventy-four lower welding as presented?
So moved.
Trudy made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? There we go.
Thank you very much. There's actually two pages on each of these where we need each council member's signature and Chip, there's another one where we need the chair to sign. And on top, we got that one as well.
Thank you.
I'll just go through those before you folks all leave and make sure we got everything.
Okay, you might as well move on to the next one while we're waiting.
Um, it's a blanket authorization that Sarah Macy and I can both be, um, also be authorized representatives on the city's behalf for state revolving funds subject.
I should have done that first.
Well, we're not, we can't, we can't sign for you folks.
Uh, do we have, can someone make a motion to have Sarah and Chip as alternate authorized representative for state revolving fund projects?
I'll make that motion.
All set.
Marie made a motion and Bob seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? You're good, Chip.
Thank you.
All right. Last one, please sign at the bottom.
There's three spaces for you, Chip.
Three?
He's the chair.
Thank you.
Taking a short break here, any nays? This one I have three for me. Make sure you slide everything, Chip.
I'll go over it.
Perfect, thank you. And we don't have Sarah here to consider authorization for summary debt, debt instruments. Are you doing that?
Okay.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Uh, that's just it, it's a blanket authorization for three individual, um, three individual notes. The first is a grant anticipation note for the Federal Street project. As the narrow states, uh, the grant itself is working space for the approval process and we need some cash to keep the engineers paid in the meantime, so, um, the quest there is to increase the city's line of credit from one million to two million to service, serve as a grant anticipation note. The second is a three-year note, uh, for a pickup truck at the waste water treatment facility. Uh, proposed debt is five, fifty thousand, the annual debt service, uh, is seventeen thousand a year. Finally, uh, we've got three projects who, uh, have kind of loose ends at the end of the project. Uh, the best example is the pool where, um, you know, with COVID, the construction bids came in higher than the bond vote. So, you know, they came in about a half million higher, we value engineered it, um, down to, um, upper threes. And we continue to service that note, service that, that deficit with the local option tax proceeds as they came in. Uh, and the auditors have said, you can do that for a year or two, but, um, if it's going to take you longer than that to retire and you need to get into a financial instrument that secures it, uh, on your balance sheet. So, um, that's what this is, the total's one point two. It's all existing funding sources, it's just a matter of memorializing the obligation in the note instead of tangling it out there by you.
Any questions for Dom? All right, do we have a motion to approve the authorization for summary debt, debt instruments?
I'm, I'm moved, I'm so moved.
For a minute, I thought we were going to recess that one to the next point. Okay, Bob made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, there we go. All the else seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I guess I was, I guess I was just not reading the team. I love Sarah, can you text Sarah?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
All right, next on the agenda, I'd like, uh, someone like to make a motion to approve the warrants of ten thirty-one.
So moved.
Second.
There we go, Trudy made the motion, Bob seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the warrants of eleven thirty?
Go ahead.
You make it easy on our neighbor.
Yes, I will make that motion.
Trudy made the motion, Bob seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of ten nine?
Yes, I make a motion.
Trudy made the motion.
I second.
Second, you have no seconded. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, any nays? Other business, Trudy started that in. No business, good, wonderful cookies.
Yes, a couple of weeks ago, I was up walking on Burnell Terrace and some nice lady came up and said she had called the stop sign, I guess, right at the corner of, uh, Upper Weldon and Burnell went down or disfaced or something. She called Marty and was taken care of within twenty-four or forty-eight hours. She was very appreciative of that. And I, I had to, I went to the tractor parade on Friday night and I was very impressed. I don't know who puts it on, but it was a great parade and fire departments from Grand Isle and our, our fire department, I guess, and Bedford Quebec. Um, Fairfield was there, all decorated. And plus there was an announcer who just told a little bit about each farmer or each organization. It was really well done, I thought, and the put, the area down where I was, right in the park, was very well attended. Lots of kids, lots, small kids. So yes, we have problems, but we also aren't able to put on a really good function on a December night. So that was really good and I was going to congratulate the police department for making an arrest in that armed robbery, but we've already done that, but that, I think that sets the community at ease just a little bit when that was done. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Marie?
Yeah, I, I kind of echo Bob. I, I, the tractor parade, I thought was fantastic. Uh, DMA, all the people that do the floats put a lot of work and time into that. They cleaned their tractors before and, uh, then putting on all those lights is quite a chore. So I mean, that's, that's a beautiful thing. And again, it's things like that that really makes St. Albans shine. You know, when they had the, the laser thing in the park, well, they didn't go quite according to, to the plan, but so what? Focus on all the positive things that are, that are done in this city and, and to make it what it is. And I, I think that's, I think we're very lucky to live in this community and I commend everybody involved because I think it's great.
And not to mention the park was magnificent.
Oh, it's the park, I have had more compliments, heard more compliments on that park this year, I think, than any prior year. And, um, so it really, I mean, St. Albans has really come alive a lot in, in the past years and, and it makes me happy to live here.
And we do provide a lot of activities that are free to the community members. So I think that we should be proud of that and also, um, you know, continue to do that. I mean, obviously we have to charge sometimes because we do have our own costs to cover, but.
But every month there's a new event and I think that that's just, that just makes it a lot of fun and for a lot of people and just a really, um, we're just, I think we're just like Vermont's little hallmark town. I don't know, I think we just, you know, have, have pulled off a great thing here. And I think we're envious of a lot of other communities in the area. So great job to everybody.
You know, I would make a comment on the park, very, very good. But I got to talk to Marty about.
You know, I would make a comment on the park. Very, very good. But I gotta talk to Marty about a situation. A tree down my way on Finn Avenue, um, it's called the one named Wes. I'm trying to think of his first name.
On the corner?
On the corner, cause that's, uh, I, I was out there and looked at it and think, would the power company have something to do with that?
I can take a look.
Yeah, cause I don't like to complain.
Finn Avenue, Calvary Street?
Yeah.
Yeah. The tree looked, it, it, it did look so bad over the summer, but it looks really bad right now.
If you look up towards the top of it, it's, uh, getting rotten. It had some limbs come down last night.
It's not our tree, that's the issue.
Yeah.
It's outside of our right way, but we can take.
But would they, would the power company?
Possibly.
Cause if it goes, if the wind's in the north, it'll take the power wires down.
Yeah, I can give them all the money.
It might land in my yard, hit the car, then I got a problem there, you know? That's it, I mean.
All right, perfect. Thank you. I don't have a lot of comments. I, I echo that. The park looks absolutely beautiful. Marty, thank you to your crew. They were out there first thing today. I think they were by, before noon scraping down, brushing off the sidewalk. Um, I like those machines a lot better than the, the big yellow long one. So appreciate that. Uh, city looks gorgeous. A lot of people do a lot of work, so, uh, just wanna let city staff, especially, I mean, Marty, you're here every month. Chip, you're here. Sarah's here sometimes. Dom, appreciate all the effort that you put into the city and being here late. I mean, I know you got kids and better things to do, probably missing a few hockey games yourself over the years and I don't know how much stuff you've missed, Chip. Uh, but do appreciate.
That was the reason I ran from here to get out of there.
Appreciate all, everything that.
You folks are also here every month, so.
Both ways.
So, uh, anyway, thank you very much. Any other business? And it's Katie. Thank you, Katie, for doing minutes. I'm sorry that this type pipe, started piping up here and making minutes all about her. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
All right, any exceptions? All those in favor?
Aye.